I'm Peter Brown from Tiny and Sons Glass. Tiny and Sons Glass was established in 1978 when my father and brother and I were at 575 Washington Street in Pembroke, were certified and qualified to do our windshield replacement and repair. Tiny and Sons Glass is a community-based business. We have 12 mobile vans that'll come to you. If the weather's bad, you can come here to the shop. We have a nice waiting area, TV, Wi-Fi, kid-friendly, pet-friendly. We also can move about 15, 20 cars a day through the shop. Perfect for you when the weather's bad. So come on down to Tiny and Sons Glass if you need your windshield replaced or repaired. Tiny and Sons Glass, 1-888-64-TINYS. Just call. Thank you.
I'm Arthur Boyle of Performance Appraisal Services. We're residential real estate appraisers with a company founded in 1994 by Mike Giannelli and I in the basement of my house in Malden. We've since grown to have offices in Malden and Pembroke. We serve the eastern Mass counties, including Cape Cod. A good client for us is an attorney, or a private landowner, or a private property owner who's going through a probate process, or a divorce division of property. Call us at 781-293-6900. Ask for Arthur Boyle or Amanda Boyle Graziosi. Our first name is Performance.
The meeting is now open. Please note that this meeting is being made available to the public through audio recording. Do we have our audio recording?
Yes.
Which will be used to ensure an accurate record of proceedings produced in the minutes of the meeting. All comments made in open session will be recorded. I apologize in advance if there's a lot of coughing as I'm recovering right now. We are going to reopen the continuance of the public meetings that were started on February 27th last Monday. There's a public hearing for proposed zoning bylaw amendment to specify that the distance of the Center Protection District's extent from the relevant ways is exactly 300 feet, no greater than 300 feet. And the public hearing for proposed zoning bylaw amendment that would eliminate the mixed use development option in the Center Protection District. Both of those public hearings are continued from February 27, 2017. We're running the two public hearings concurrently, as was discussed at the start of the meeting. So, everybody have any comments? We do have a new package tonight that just sort of lays out the map of the Center Protection District based on the current zoning map. It does indicate that the expectation at that time that someone drafted the zoning map was that it was a 300-foot setback in the Center Protection District. It also shows the map of the parcels in the Center Protection District. There was some discussion at the last public hearing as to how many parcels would actually be affected by these zoning bylaw amendments. So Matthew copied for us the map from that district so you can get a sense of scale. So we have that in front of us. We have the proposed amendments and selected pages from the current zoning bylaws to compare. Does anybody have any comments they want to make, or should we wait and see if the public participants have anything to...
Can I open up the public?
Do you have anything? All right, we're going to open it up for public comments. I see there are some members of the public here, so I don't know if anybody has a comment that they want to make. Mr. DiMarzo?
Robert DiMarzo, 42 Matickeese Street, Trevor Nassis Realty Trust, too. Excuse me. Sorry I couldn't be here last week. I was out of town and it had been rescheduled from when I could have been here. But I was able to listen to the YouTube video provided by the Fable people. I guess my first question is, some of this pertains to the 220 Center Street project of Mr. McGill. I was wondering what the planning board's thoughts are on that project.
Well, I think what we said last time is that that is still, that site plan is still before the planning board, and the planning board is still planning to consider that site plan. But the public hearing for that site plan is not until next Monday?
I believe next Monday.
I believe it's next Monday? So those discussions are specific to a site would be discussed at that hearing?
So I guess my question then is, and I wasn't clear, what would, if this bylaw goes through in April, what happens to the McGill property proposal and the Sealan-Dacy? Are they grandfathered, or are they no longer able to do what they have been working on for a period of time?
Well, I honestly, I don't know the answer to that question. I think that's a question for our council, but...
Well, you really should if you're proposing a bylaw that is going to affect people, property owners in the center of town where they have their heart of money and other people, you should know the answer to that.
Well, but this bylaw is not directed at specific projects. This bylaw is directed at the district as a whole. The site plan for Mr. McGill's project is coming up pretty immediately, so we'll know the answer to that before this gets voted on at town meeting. We'll know how that site plan review is going. As far as I know, we do not currently have a new site plan for review on the other property that you're talking about.
Okay.
On Mr. Sealan's property. He had come in and talked to us, but the site plan, the only site plan that exists in that property is from 2005, I want to say?
Somewhere around there.
Somewhere around 2005. So that property has a unique issue as to whether or not that site plan is still in place.
I agree with that.
And that's very specific to that property. I don't think, I don't think it's going to change our discussion about this bylaw amendment either way. With Mr. McGill's property, I think the expectation is that we would try to work through that site plan process, and we may be able to resolve that before the town meeting goes to this bylaw. And is that a... I want to see if the board agrees with me on that, because I'm giving my opinion, but...
No, I certainly concur with that. I hope that's the case, because we've got to do what's best for the community in the town. And there were some inaccuracies, not necessarily intentional, that the board talked about the last meeting, and I want to clear that up with facts, not just we think the intent was. There was some discussion that the Center Protection District Committee that Brian was on, the planning board member Ben Reifer, and Jerry Dempsey was on. Well, that this language...
We were on it too.
Are you on it too?
I was on the other.
That's right, you were. That's right. And that this language somehow got in there and we weren't sure how...
Right, how it got in there.
It got there.
That's what I heard too.
That's not true. And the language, we talk about, there was talk about intent. I don't like when somebody says intent. I like to read what the words say. In 1970... You put the glasses on, I'm getting old to you. In 1977, certified copy by the town clerk, the zoning bylaws, the section of Matickeese and Center Street was Business A. There was no Center Protection, and it referred to 300 feet deep. 1977. And I think you get this to your assistant...
That was 1977 or 1970?
Seventy-seven, right. Town bylaws.
Seventy-seven?
Seventy-seven. 1979, legal notices, went to town meeting. Center Protection District, this overlay district is created to provide visual qualities, et cetera. It shall include all that land that has frontage on the following ways to a depth of 300 feet from said ways, whichever is greater. This existed in 1979. It was specifically, not my opinion, it's very clear that it was specifically put that language to go from 300 feet to whichever is greater.
What does it mean to whichever is greater?
Whichever is greater.
I agree with you that I don't like the language.
Whichever is greater. You may not like the language, but it says all that land, 300 feet, or whichever is greater. All that land.
Beyond 300 feet.
Beyond 300 feet.
Some of those lots are deeper, as you know.
Right. I always thought the language was kind of vague and not clear in the way it was drafted.
Yep. Your own engineer, Merrill, gave an interpretation to Mr. Dudson a couple of years ago that it was very clear. So that was what went on back then.
So is your understanding that it could go back a mile deep?
Well...
If it's 300 or whichever is greater, and we could expand the lot as far...
In reality, no.
Well, but we could, Mr. McGill had explained to us this, that they had, or Mr. Galvin, I don't recall which, that they had actually appended another piece of property that was behind that lot, so now that lot is bigger. So theoretically, if it's 300 feet or whichever is greater, it could keep grabbing land into one lot.
Well, no, you see, you'd end up with frontage on, like in my property, I ended up the frontage to be on Laurel, which is in residential. But I, it also, you know, so where can you go back a mile where you wouldn't end up with frontage on another street outside of...
Maybe you should try to amend it that only one lot could be attached, or that no lots can be attached, but leave it alone.
Can I finish?
Okay.
So, jumping ahead of myself, what I'm hoping that you folks will do tonight is postpone this. Come back next April, maybe even the fall, getting the people that are involved in the center of town and the rest of the community with input, because there was no input until tonight of last Monday. This was done at the last minute. And come up with language that addresses your concern. It can only go back so far, or existing parcels, or whatever. I believe it can be done. In reality, although that chart shows all these parcels, there's only a few that can do the mixed use, or maybe even come close. McGill property, the Sealan and Dacy, the Dudson, which is shy frontage and shy square footage, which makes it problematic, because how do you make something...
Which one is that?
Dudson is across from Jocelyn Farms, next to Smith Excavation. They're not going to acquire back land, those people, because it's a cemetery, and I don't think you can buy out cemetery plots, last I heard. Maybe...
Well, you do back up to, I mean, this is where you start to get into how could people reconfigure land, right?
Well, no, it backs up to the cemetery. It's a fact.
Well, no, so you're looking at, is that Smith right there?
Okay, I'll get you this specific. So looking at across from the shopping center, you have, starting from the corner of the curve, you have the Rockland Trust, then you have the Funeral Home, then parcel 14, that is 14, 15 is the Funeral Home. 15A, which is the food broker that's currently for sale, very narrow. You're not going to get your sidelines and anything else to work on it now, because no matter how deep it is.
Well, what if somebody pulls a few of those lots together?
That's the right.
Yeah. No, I know, but you said it wouldn't work on any of these lots, but I'm saying it would if you pulled them together.
Not going back a mile.
But not going back a mile. You're into the cemetery.
Right.
Same thing with Dudson. Another Dudson property, well, then you got the bank, that land is pretty much done, there's a big drain adjacent. Then you have Dudson. The Dudson family has probably owned that land before any of us were born, and they've paid taxes on it. And now it's Jerry Dudson's retirement plan, and you're looking to rezone this, and the McCarthys too possibly, that right now, they could use that back land for business land. Set aside the mixed use. They could use it for business.
The mixed use, that's what we were trying to separate the 300 feet from the mixed use.
So the 300 feet, you're taking away their retirement, the money that they've paid taxes on for business land for all these years, and you're saying, we're going to take it away because we think this is the zoning, and it wasn't the zoning. It was very clear.
But it's still a commercial residential district, and no lands wouldn't be taken away within the 300 feet, because the 300 feet is just for the overlay district, right?
No. The 300 feet is the whole zone.
The whole zone. So what Mr. DiMarzo's saying is that if we cut it off at 300 feet...
No, I understand that.
This land could not be used for business purposes, and there's no easy way to use it for residential, so that land becomes unusable.
Right now, it can be used for business, 500 feet back. There was also a comment last week, I think Mr. McGill said, "Well, can I go back further past the 300 and use it?" And it was said, "No." In fact, somebody can go back 330 feet. I don't know if you realize that's in the bylaw, but if you split two zones, you can go back 330 feet, not just 300 feet. So that was improperly stated.
So when you look at the ones in Center Street, so I'm looking...
I highlight something there for a second.
Okay.
I posed the question to Mr. McGill's attorney, could you get relief from the lots in two districts? Mr. Galvin's response was, "No." So nobody on our side indicated what that lots in two zones would be interpreted as in this case. But I went directly to the best legal mind in the room, Mr. Galvin.
Well, anyway, you can go...
I cited his opinion on it, and he was, his response was, "No." Mr. McGill would not get relief under that.
Well, regardless of whose opinion, the fact of the matter is, you can go back 330 feet. If it splits two zones, you can go 30 feet into two zones.
As you're saying, you're just stating as a fact book.
It's fact. You know it's in the zone.
No, I read it. Right. That might be your interpretation. I went to, okay, Mr. Galvin's town council for the town of Marshville and the town of Norwell, when you're disputing him.
All I would say is, Mrs. Calata, how many lawyers win every case? In every case, there's a winning and a losing lawyer. So anyway, but I don't want to dwell on that.
Right now, I think we're getting a little distracted on the 30 feet either is or isn't added to the zone regardless, and our commentary here isn't going to change that.
So I would ask you to postpone this, bring everybody together, and show up on town meeting floor with a unified front, because you're not going to have a unified front, I don't think. And I don't think, quite frankly, you're going to get a two-thirds vote on it. But I do think with a unified front, it can be cleaned up, and it can be made to work for everybody and for the betterment of the town. We do need a business community downtown. Nobody, it seems, has wanted the big boxes, which never comes too big, but a lot. But they do want something, and I do believe in the mixed use. I do believe in different types of housing. The former project that Sealan and Dacy bought from me, I've had people come up to me, and they were pleased, one family, they were able to stay in Pembroke and move into the Sealan and Dacy condominiums, otherwise they'd have to move out of town. Another family is a very well-known family, and the widow is living there. So, and I think let's talk about the pricing of housing. I don't think this is going to be high-end. I quite frankly, I don't know what the housing is going to be, but we do need a mix of housing. We do need people downtown. And if you look at all the healthy communities, that have healthy downtown communities, Plymouth. Plymouth is hot downtown. Situ is hot. Duxbury is downtown something. They have a mix. So bring everybody together, work on it, and I think you can end up on unified front at town meeting.
I think, I think when you say that everyone wants a business center, I would say that some of, some of what I've heard, and I'm the newest member to this committee, but some of what I've heard over the last couple of years is that the mixed use is not a use as of right, it's a use as a special permit under the Center Protection District. And so the planning board, as of today, could deny a special permit for mixed use.
Unless you meet the steps that grant the special permit, there are certain, if you meet those special permit provisions, then...
Well, but it's up for the planning board to determine whether or not the special permit requirements in terms of the mix and how it adds to the district are, make it, advisable for us to issue a special permit. So that's currently, it's a special permit, it's not a use as of right. Whereas doing an office clinic or a medical office, things like that are uses more or less as of right, subject to kind of engineering site plan type stuff. But the mixed use is a special permit process that is within the jurisdiction of the planning board right now. I think the concern that I've heard, sort of what I was getting to, is that the concern I've heard, with business districts, unless you start to have a certain amount of small businesses, particularly when you're trying to do small businesses and not huge box stores, that if you don't get a certain amount of them, you never get the synergies that you need...
I agree with you.
...to build on each other, right? That it takes a certain number of those in the, the development at the Stop &amp; Shop in that corner has added some amount of synergies. But until you get a few professional office buildings and some newer buildings, Bridgewater Savings Bank was an addition there, but until you get some, you're kind of frittering away a little bit of prime land for the town in terms of developing a small walking business district. Not a district like we have over at Route 3, but a smaller walking district. And so I guess, you know, having a 300-foot frontage, having, having it not be mixed use seemed to be more tied to the original intent of the Center Protection District building that kind of business area in town.
250, not 300. 250. 250 feet frontage, not 300 foot frontage.
I meant 300 foot depth.
Depth, okay.
That's really...
The, there was some mention of maybe redoing the master plan. The master plan really isn't, isn't that all. As a matter of fact, Juan Del was on the master plan committee. And it talks about, if you want, I can bore you with it, but it talks about bringing in the mixed use into the downtown area. So once again, I think if you change the depth, you're hurting people, it's going to hurt potential business, people who pay taxes. If you work with everybody, come up to try to avoid what you think may at some point create excesses, and I agree, you don't want somebody going back a million miles, but in reality, it's very difficult to buy somebody out five houses back. I mean, look at Greenwood Avenue. Steve Curley, he's right up front. Is he going to buy every house on his street and have this little strip on the other side of the first church and buy every house behind that? There's a lot that it can't work. When the business zone was changed on Route 139, I was a vocal opponent of changing it to Business B, it was Business A, because it went from 150 feet and 40,000 to 200 feet and bigger setbacks and, and all this, and I said, "It's not going to work." Because for somebody to do something on 139, they had to accumulate a lot of parcels to conform. And guess what? Nothing's gone on there, because you can't conform to it without buying three or four or five different parcels. And maybe you should take a look at that too, and see if there's some way to, to improve that, that zoning there. So the master plan does refer to it, and I respectfully ask that you come back...
One of the issues that we've seen with the mixed use is that we haven't seen the ratio of mixed use to residential as in the bylaws come before us without a variance being sought to see some relief, meaning that we haven't seen the ratio of mixed use really be what we expected it to be. Now, any project that would come before us and had the ratio of mixed use to the residential met the setbacks and everything else, we'd be happy to see. But we haven't seen it. Moreover, we've seen some other projects where the, you know, the commercial piece of it has been postponed almost indefinitely. And I understand there's some market, you know, market things in play there, but we haven't seen it. So that's been a reason why we've taken a look at this and tried to take a look at it from a different perspective and say, maybe the mixed use piece, it's just not panning out, because the market either isn't ready for it or wants it. And we're not seeing the projects come before us. I mean, we thought, I think, when the Center Protection District was proposed, that that would spur a lot of the kind of development that we wanted to see there. But in fact, it spurred some development that we wanted to see, but not with the correct ratio of mixed use to residential. And that's been a big issue.
And some of the feedback from the hearings, I have never attended the McGill hearings, I obviously attended my own, and the previous one, when I owned McGill property, was from the Abutters and people that weren't Abutters even, that they wanted a lower amount of business. And that's what I believe the zoning board used their powers, which they have the power to do this. They have the power to do exactly what they did. And they used their powers and said, "This is what we're hearing from these people. This is what we think makes sense." Now, I can't...
Well, actually, they don't. They don't.
Well, they have the power to issue a variance. They don't have the power to issue a special permit.
No, they don't. They issued a variance.
Or develop the site plan.
They issued a variance.
Right. So all they've done so far is issue a variance, so they haven't ruled on site, on special permits or on site...
Right, that's your...
For this district, yeah.
Bob, you and I worked on the project years ago, and Andy just hit the nail on the head. It sounds great on paper, whatever. I was for it, you were for it. We worked together to see this adopted. So your recollection and mine are pretty much the same. But Andy hit it on the head when he said, "We just don't have the mix that we anticipated the business element compared to a high component of residential only." And even if the bylaw is open, which it is, to much interpretation, apparently we gave too much to another board to determine what was intended in the bylaw. But it hasn't worked to our advantage as a town center yet. And my general belief has come over the years, and I was a solid defender of this, of this bylaw for many years, is that it's obsolete, in one word. It's obsolete. And you say the people don't want the big box store, well, you've got Stop &amp; Shop. And you've got 11,000 square foot CBS. Those are little boxes.
That's not a big box store.
Well, you know what I'm saying. No, it's not Walmart, but I don't think we're going to get a Walmart in there, and frankly, I'd be opposed to it.
We want the village-type business.
All we're asking for is to meet a happy medium. But if, if, whether it's, how do you calculate 1.25 bedrooms on the site, or how many units get onto the site, or what ratio of business versus resident, if that's just going to get thrown out the window every time somebody comes in with, you know, another residential development, then, you know, we're missing the point. We're missing the point entirely as a town. And we did have this debate last session about, you know, what everybody's vision of where the center will be five years from now, or whatever. It's unknown. But I can tell you that this, as it's been applied in practice, when I say this, mixed use zoning bylaw does not meet the bill in any way of what you and I anticipated. And I don't think you can sit there and honestly disagree with me about that.
What I will tell you is, I felt, and you folks obviously feel that the bylaw needed to be tweaked, and before I started the 220 Center Street project, I came to the planning board and I said, "Look, I'm close to square footage, and I'm close to frontage, and I don't have enough. And there's things that need to be worked on for the bylaw. What do you think about taking a look at it?"
I looked at those recently.
Pardon?
I looked at your request.
And the board...
It was about a year and a half, almost two years ago.
Yeah, more than two years ago, because it was before the project. And the board said to me, this club, the board said to me, "Just go to the ZDA and get a variance."
Oh, no, you never said that.
Oh, yes, you did.
No.
I asked Mrs. Chau... The board said, excuse me, I'm speaking. The board said to me, "Just go on and get a variance." So what did I do? I spent six months and seven meetings, and seven months, six meetings, engineering, architect, worked with the Abutters, and went for the variance. And we all know what happened. I ended up in court, six and a half hours left in the appeal period. Ended up in court and then said, "Whoop, made some mistakes, let's start over." Started again, unfortunately, had a very serious injury to my leg, and I said, "This is, I can't continue anymore, I don't even know what, you know how my leg's going to be after that." Anybody was, I could barely stand. I think you folks here, I could barely stand. So anyway, so it didn't, it does need tweaking. It does need tweaking. So don't throw the baby out with the bath water. Work on it, and nothing's going to be coming before you folks in any great period of time. That's my thoughts. We have some disagreements, obviously, but the fact is, the zoning does go back, and I'll provide copies to the '70s. That was intentional.
Is that for the Center Protection District, that the '70s?
Yeah. Bill Buckley drafted, I've got to give him credit, drafted the Center Protection District way back then. He lived on Lawrence Harris.
It's something we can...
I've said it.
It's not governed.
No.
Brian, did you want to respond? Do you want to add something to the hearing?
Well, you know, only that, you know, the board came to us two and a half years ago, whatever.
I believe that was 300 feet.
Every one of the requests that you sought for us to approve and move and reduce in the zoning bylaw were things that eventually you went to the zoning board to get a variance for. So in other words, you only made a proposal to enhance your lot in particular. And that's why the board gave you basically, hey, we can't help you, you know, you can't just take a look at one person's lot.
It wasn't one person, it was the whole district. It said, "Tweak the bylaw, work on the bylaw," and it said, "The one and a half bedrooms doesn't work."
Exactly what you went to the zoning board to obtain after we gave you the, "We don't think this is necessary." You went right to 90,000 square feet of area, because you were prepared to sell land to the housing authority. You went exactly to 150 feet or 200 feet perhaps, because you had 209. You went right down categorically down the list to enhance and enwelf yourself. And I'll get the paperwork for you for here.
The whole district. And yes, I wanted to sell the land for the housing authority, because they were going They were gonna build more senior housing. And they were gonna build housing for the veterans.
Oh, okay.
I think we're gonna retry this.
Okay.
It's so disheartening.
So, let's talk through the chair, because this could get heated. And obviously, this is a specific matter. What we're trying to look at here with the bylaw is not just specific variances or specific lots, but as a general matter, whether this bylaw as currently written serves the needs of the town, or whether these adjustments would make it better serve the needs of the town. The master plan, it's somewhat recent, but it's well past 10 years. What's the date on the master?
It's about 13 years old, I think.
Maybe so, two or three.
It's 2004. March 2004.
Yes, it's 13 years.
So, 13 years.
So, I mean, I think the general idea is that doing a new master plan every 10 years allows you to, when you're looking at something like mixed use in our town, I think you have to look at, okay, now, in the last 13 years, how many units of multifamily housing has gone into the town? And does that influence in the master plan what we still need as a town? Right? And so, that was why I was one who has been really pushing to look at our master plan on a larger scale and say, "Okay, do we have what we need as a town to grow and prosper and even add our tax base and have access to services and meet all of the sort of 21st century needs of a town our size?" But this bylaw is a little narrower. It's not the grand plan. It's not redoing the grand plan. I think it's trying to go back to what was the vision for the Center Protection District? Are we achieving it by having mixed use in the special permit process? And are we achieving it by allowing people to go back further than 300 feet or not? So, that's sort of, you know, I don't know if it makes sense. There's been comment from the public that we think about putting this off. I don't-
Well, let me make a couple of comments first on that. So, we have the public hearing process because we do wanna get the input and everything else. And I understand maybe we wanted to postpone this for a while, but the public hearing process is precisely to do that. So, with the notification time, too. So, we have done that. And I think we probably wanna proceed with this and see whether it prevails or not at town meeting. But on the mixed use, I think, judging from where this board is going and some of the input that we've got, I think we wanna let that bylaw change, either win or lose it on town meeting floor. But looking at this 300-foot and looking at the specific properties that are gonna outline them at Keget Street, you know, one of the challenges we've also had with some commercial development here is you look at these parcels, and they look kinda perfect for landscape yards, but because they're narrow, we've got a fair amount of landscape yards in the center of town, which, you know, is allowed, but not particularly desirable as the only businesses that we get there. Any ideas as what kind of commercial use would be workable there with the depth of the lots? Because we may wanna look at, say, from Center Street over to Grove Street, that we allow the depth to be deeper.
Or, it's sort of, I was wondering whether we also look at whether it's 300 feet or the size of an existing parcel.
Right.
So that we avoid sort of how far back could it go?
Right.
Which seems more to address some of the concerns while cutting off sort of the risk that this could become out of control in some way. I'm trying to look at, other than the ones on Matta Keget Street, I'm not sure how many in the district actually go back further than 300 feet.
Not many. Fifty of two.
Yeah. So, in that sense, I guess, you know, would the board consider saying 300 feet?
Well, what's the depth of these parcels that we're selling up here?
Maybe we can get a approach.
There's a scale.
Well, I can tell you that my parcel goes back 287.5 feet.
So, it doesn't affect you?
That particular part does not affect me, no. And all my abutting neighbors are approximately the same depth. And that begins at the intersection of Grove Street across on Matta Keget. So, go from next to Sunshine Pool and walk towards Danny Smith's property.
Yep.
Okay? So, you see those four that are, that's about your 300-foot line?
Right there, yeah, okay.
Okay? But, you know, I mean-
But the rest of them in that line there?
Right. Obviously exceeded. And we all supported Dan Smith when he wanted to step outside and go back a little bit further. You know, and to Mr. DiMarzo's point, you can't get any, you're not gonna be selling, no one's gonna be buying the cemetery. You know, so that kinda locks those up where they are. They can't be anything else than other what they are for depth. You can't go buy them.
And if you look at, on the other side of Center Street, Sealeen's property is roughly bang on 300 feet. So, that'll give you an idea of the depth if you carry that line down, up and down Center Street. That'll give you an idea of where 300 feet, which lots are beyond it. And I know that's roughly 300 feet.
I see six lots along Matta Keget Street on the north side. And I see the two, one with three bills and one with a family that lives in a store. I'm saying, a statement.
Corner of Mount Nam.
One of those six is also the frontage is getting for the 7-Eleven store.
Right. Here.
There are some severe topography problems in that lot here because it takes such an immediate slope downward. So, there are some practical problems. Not too bad on the other lots, but that one's probably most affected is the 7-Eleven lot.
I think that's the one.
The funeral home does off as well.
I see, yeah. I don't think right there is where what the problem may exist at. It's the other five or so lots that could be impacted.
Can I show you some?
However.
Jerry Ducksen, 37 Matta Keget Street. This is a plan that I had Merrill draw up for our lot. And this is basically, I mean, it's gonna show, okay, there's the, what he's saying is that we can get a building in here. This would be Smith's. And then propose a two-story office building back here. And we're utilizing the legal amount of a lot there.
How far back is this, do you know?
I'm not exactly sure with a 300, but I think my lot's 500 and something.
Is that the one that has the two houses on it now?
No. I've got the one house and a barn attached to it.
Okay, so you have the one right adjacent that you're in.
Yeah, right between the bank and-
Okay, yeah.
Oh, between the bank and Smith, okay.
Right.
The older house is close to the street.
Right. So, this would be, now, I don't know if he looked back at the 300 feet on this one or not, but the point is, at 300 feet, this is all landlocked. It's useless at that point. You know, the bank is over here, and the back of the bank's property, you know, they've got some drainage there, but, I mean, theirs is basically useless.
There's nothing I can do because-
But I'm just saying that 300 feet, if you're looking to get more commercial in the center of town, it's penalizing.
To be honest, the idea of building behind buildings, has it really been successful? Have you noticed?
Well, this is just something that he proposed. I'm not saying that this is-
And most would be because of the setback requirement sent up. Unless you're gonna put a live parking area to the front, the problem with these six and seven lots in the low areas, obviously, you don't have a heck of a lot of front. So, it's all, somebody's trying to come in with some bigger scale that's gonna say, "Oh, yeah, you and Smith's make a deal." You know, we can work with that. Well, isn't there an assisted living facility that came in here at one point or two?
Yeah, they walked it back.
Yeah. And there was nothing pro-heavering, you know?
You guys turned it down.
We never had an opportunity to do that.
Well, because it went to town, the town meeting, and-
Oh, well, the town meeting-
In the town meeting, then, they required five acres and-
Oh, no, that was another district. That wasn't proposed in this district. But they did come to us and talk to us about that. We would move with them, so it probably would make that happen.
No, that wasn't my impression, or theirs.
I remember the discussion. We were in a discussion of assisted living, about assisted living. He didn't come to the planning board with this. And then there was the discussion, well, I think Bob was also looking at his lot at the time, about assisted living there and Brian, but yeah. I think there was a discussion with the planning board.
This one.
Not with that design. I know that he did a list.
No, not.
Yes, on his lot.
I think I was the original one that came.
I recall the discussion.
And we had purchase sale agreement on it, and then the bylaw had to be written, and apparently the medical marijuana overtook that, or you had to get that done. By the time the bylaw was getting written, the buyer backed out, basically, can't wait for it. But, you know, they wanted to put a nice, small assisted living unit, which is perfect. The center of town, people can walk to everything. Now that we've got the store, the banks, the hardware, I mean, everything's there for them. But the elderly, and what do we have? Just that one.
Well, was it gonna be assisted living or independent?
It was gonna be assisted living.
Did you ever copy any of the vacation? We looked them up.
Right.
Built in water town center or something.
Yeah, they had several projects. But it was our understanding that it was not for the center of town.
I think the, because we worked on the draft, since we were in bylaws, we weren't sure which zones we were in. We were sticking within a certain zone, but this wasn't one.
We ended up on just residential, commercial zone and industrial.
It also wasn't a central.
So, would you entertain it in the center of town?
Assistant living.
Right.
So, let's get to the, let's get to the point. Thank you.
But it was a 300-foot, was my point.
No, that's a good point. Thank you. This was the one that I was gonna have a point to make.
I think we should send it down over. Mr. Ducksen, Mr. Smith had a purchaser. They went to the planning board. Planning board said they would draft the bylaw. I think Mr. Van Rijck was actually going to draft it, never got done in a timely manner that the buyer walked and went. I know, and did they go to Hanson? Is that the one that went to Hanson?
No, Hanson was already in the works.
Was it? Okay. And what you have now, though, has worked out as well, on the horse farm. So, it's better than when they wanted to put an industrial park. The horse farm, I guess, is a more traditional.
Memory cat.
Oh.
It's memory cat.
What is?
Yeah, you can't remember. There's a movie.
The horse farm, it's supposed to be a memory cat instead of an assisted living.
All right, so how do we wanna proceed with the 300-foot issue for us?
I guess we're looking at the existing parcels and existing owners.
There's a couple of ways you could work this. You could go and expand it from 300 to 400, or 400 to all the lot or whatever. Or, you can, through this process of drafting, yeah, we're gonna look at some limitation as to the depth of lots, which is not uncommon throughout almost all business districts in town, or all conditioned on setback from the way. And secondly, we could make a future eligibility date. When does the bylaw go into effect? If you give these people a year or something to work, to try to work around your issue, do you have time to try to put something together realistically? As I said, the adoption date, if you will, would be, you know, June 1st, 2018, or something like that. I don't wanna preclude anybody's building rights, but at some point, you know, again, we have to set a reasonable, in my view, we have to set a reasonable depth to the zone. I agree that the center cemetery, obviously, is a restriction. I don't think anybody's gonna be able to buy up that land behind that. I hope not anyway.
David, I'm sorry.
I wonder where your frontage resides.
Here's, the issue is, again, it's maybe placing an effective date that gives time for parties to try to work out something in terms of conforming to a new potential setback. If not, then, obviously, it's up to the board as to how it would proceed after putting this on town meeting floor for consideration as to whether we would draw with it, or were able to work with the neighbors that are there, the landowners in this case, to try to work something out.
I guess I would be open to either modifying our amendment to allow 300 feet or the depth of an existing, of a parcel existing on this date, on the date of adoption. Or, having an effective date, I would propose if we're gonna go with the effective date option, that we say like July 1st, 2018, so we sort of start a new fiscal year.
Well, do we do that? I mean, if we did the 300 feet or the depth of an existing parcel as of this date-
That wouldn't matter.
It wouldn't matter. What we would maybe want to consider the effective date is with the mixed use, because we do have a couple of projects before us. If we made the effective date-
We have one.
We have one, right.
Well, we have another one that-
And a potential other one that could come back before us, which we requested real estate plan.
Tax expired.
I think Mr. Wondell's idea is an excellent idea. And for the planning board member, Coletta, I liked the first part about a certain date, a depth, rather. To say a certain date, you're making a lifestyle decision for the people, once again, who pay taxes, have lived there, and may not be ready to do something with, if they're living in a house or whatever, that they're looking, "I can retire in 10 years, my pension is there," or so on. And just as some of the people look, "I've got this big house, and we're looking to move something smaller." But you know what your timeframe is. And the town would be forcing somebody to make a decision they may not be ready for. So, pick a depth, give a timeframe for the mixed use, and I think you can end up in town meeting with a winner.
Well, to Mr. DiMarzo's point, though, as far as the depth, also the mixed use, I mean, I have a sophomore in high school, okay? My plan is to get him off to college and then utilize the parcel that I've been paying the taxes on and that we've had to help pay for his college. And maybe buy myself a little something over in his development. I don't need the big house, okay? Because I like Pembroke Center. It's nice. You can walk around. You know? And I don't know why to try to take the housing development away from the Center Protection District. It's neat when you got a walking village. Then you get the businesses that you folks are looking for, that everyone's looking for here. Okay? You get the coffee shop, okay? You get the breakfast place. What can you buy for food in Pembroke Center? If you go out and walk around Pembroke Center, what do you get?
Dunkin' Donuts.
Dunkin' Donuts or pizza?
Pizza.
Okay? And you need to be able to attract that in. But they need a base of a village-style of community in order to support the smaller businesses that are tucked in here. Because everyone else, they're going out to the highway.
I'm sorry, could you give your name?
My name's John Ingram, and we-
And which, which address?
59 Matta Keget Street.
And how big is that property?
That property, right now, does not conform. I have 55,000 square feet, so I have that. I don't have the frontage, but my neighbor wants to sell me his house, and then I do.
Okay, but I still wonder, how much mixed use you could get on that property? I mean-
It doesn't matter. I could put two nice, I could put two apartments above the house that exists there and have the offices you folks want. There's already two staircases in the place. It's set up for it. It's a no-brainer, okay? But, you know, by you saying no more mixed use in this district, you're reaching into other people's pockets and making decisions for them.
Well, but I'm not sure that the mixed use, the ratios you're talking about fit with the bylaws that exist today.
Excuse me?
I'm not sure the ratios you're talking about fit with the bylaws today. That's what I'm trying to understand.
What ratios are those, please?
The property is 100,000 square feet.
Absolutely.
No, I'm just trying to understand the property better, because part of this is, so, lot size for mixed use development have to have 100,000 square feet.
Right. That's on me to conform to that. And quite frankly, I'm pretty sure I can, because I've been in discussion with people that are around me for years.
I understand their point of view, obviously. The problem I have, sir, though, is like, we have this bylaw, and then a fellow like him wants to put some mixed use on, and you say, "Okay, that sounds good. That's what's allowed in that zone." And then you say, "But I want 20 housing units."
No, I don't want 20 housing units.
We don't know what, in the end.
You, you have the power to say, no, you can't, you have to conform.
Oh, but then they threaten with a 40B.
Yeah, they, you know, they instantly keep doing that. That's happened too.
But Pembroke has, Pembroke's reached its affordable housing. 40B isn't going to.
Well, it hasn't, yeah, it has an actual floor.
How, how far away are you?
Well, the problem is that as other places get, um, built, it adds to the ratio, right? So if you add 10 market.
Would you say you're north of 9.5%?
Yes.
I, I, I know that you are.
But we're at a point where, where it's still possible to have something crammed down, and over the next.
One affordable housing unit, though?
No, no.
Well, 25% of the project has to meet affordable criteria.
But if another subdivision went into town, and the base would be there, go up, and we'd still be below the 10%.
Well, you, I, and to your point, I agree, but 25% of anything that I could put there would have to fall into that criteria.
No.
If I was, no?
If you were doing a 40B.
If I was doing a 40B. Why would I want to do a 40B? All 40B does is slow me down and piss you off. Okay?
Nobody wants to do it. Anybody who does 40B is forced to do 40B, nobody wants to.
No one wants to do it.
Well, we have a 68-unit proposal before the board is selected today up on Water Street, so I think somebody wants to do it.
Oh, yeah.
And we have 9.5% plus of affordable housing stock available to us, et cetera, so.
Well, we have the Bird Street project underway at the same time.
We have Bird Street.
But we also have developments coming up on Taylor Street and Bryson Way that would add to the regular, you know, so each time we build the affordable, we also have other houses going up here and there that changes the mix.
I understand that, but on the, on the 110,000 square feet that I can assemble here, what would that allow me for living units?
Under the bylaw?
Yes.
As written?
Yes.
Six.
Uh, no, I'm sorry, what was the amount again, 100,000?
110,000 square feet.
Yeah, it'd be like eight, eight or nine, yeah, it's, it's one per quarter.
One per 10,000 square feet.
Right. So, how many, I, I mean, am I, am I going to try to do a 40B for eight units? I, I mean, it's stupid. It, it doesn't even make sense to go build a project like that, you can't make any money because of, you can't.
Well, you can.
Not on that, not on that small amount of units.
I mean, just to be clear, it's 11 units, but you also then it can't be more than 50% of the development overall, which can't take up more than a certain percentage of the property, so there's.
So I really can't get that much there, and it doesn't, I, I, I have no interest in 40B. I'll sign a piece of paper that said I'd never do it.
We can't hold you to it.
I understand that.
Mr. McGill, you had something to add?
When you, on the 300-foot setback, couldn't you, I, I was looking at this map that Matthew printed out, and couldn't you say something along the, you know, your frontage of the original property, um, you know, the depth of the, you know, original property, wherever it's from, I don't know how you could word it, but, you know, I'm not a lawyer, but it, you can't go back anywhere where you don't have buy property that deep where you can, you're not going to end up with frontage on another road, a residential road, so it wouldn't behoove you to, like, me going back and buying Mr. Healy's property and into Laurel, I'd end up with frontage on Laurel.
Right, but right now it doesn't matter, because you'd still have frontage in Center Street.
Yeah, but that's what I'm saying, that's what I'm saying, the original property has frontage in Center Street, in Center Protection. So if you could word it somewhere where the frontage of the original property and the depth of that property, then you can't really go back anywhere where you wouldn't hit another development.
Yeah, I think the language we're talking about wouldn't affect you, but, by the way, because you've already acquired that property, right?
No, I haven't gotten frontage, but it still wouldn't, if I combined it, it's still not deeper, I'm not making my property any deeper. So, that would be, that wouldn't, I'm, I, even if I add that parcel when I, when I, that 20,000 square feet.
Oh, you haven't added it yet?
No, and that wouldn't be, so that wouldn't go, but that wouldn't make my parcel any deeper, I'm not making it go back any farther.
Any deeper than the back, than the back line of the lot you have.
Yeah, 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 it would be, it follows that line straight across.
So you say something to the effect of, no deeper than the original parcel that existed on the date of X, Y, Z.
Right.
So you'll go sideways, but you can't go any deeper.
That sort of feels like we're, we're sort of just trying to zone around a specific issue, as opposed to trying to come up with a rule for the zone.
Right.
Um, which is where the effective date would say, okay, get your ducks in a row now, and then we're going to lock it in to what's good for the zone, maybe makes some amount of sense.
But why wouldn't you, why wouldn't you try to work that zoning around the residents, the few residents that, that have property and interest with inside that district? Why wouldn't you do that? It would stay, it would stay with the now-existing ownership.
I think that's what we're doing.
I, I think that's a little bit what we're addressing, it's just we're showing whether we're going to go as far as, as individuals might want us to, because keep in mind that it's the planning board, we're looking at the interest of the, of the homeowners in the district, but we're also looking at the interest of the town, right? Um, there's a balance here, where we're trying to come up with a rule that, that, um, that helps the town, um, build its village center, which has always been expected to be kind of the, a little business village center of the town. Even, as Mr. DiMarzo said tonight, going back to the 1970s, you know, there's a question as to how deep it was meant to be, but it was always some sort of business component to this area of town, so that's not like something that's being introduced. The mixed use was actually something added in, not the, um, business, isn't really something that's new. It's not like we're suddenly saying we're going to take a residential area of town and make it business.
We're basically going back to what it was before.
It was a business district where there was an experiment to add some mixed use to see if that would help spur the business development.
So that bylaw was an experiment?
Yes.
Okay.
Failed.
A failed experiment.
How would it affect the town's future for like, that, the, that we've seen, they have, they obviously own the biggest piece of parcel there, if the town or something felt the need for elderly housing, or something along those lines, that, you know, on the map it says the Pilgrim Area Collaborative, um, the future use of that parcel?
Well, that's town-owned.
Well, yeah, when it comes to town.
Yeah, so that's what I'm saying, how would it affect?
And that's in the historic district, too.
Yeah, it's not in the Center Protection District, it's actually outside the Center Protection District.
So also, uses allowed includes municipal, charitable, philanthropic, educational, religious, or governmental uses are separate and apart from whether it's commercial or mixed use. So if it's, if it falls in that category, arguably, it, um, it, it doesn't matter what the bylaw says with mixed use, right?
Hi, Susan Fitzgibbon, Senator Holly Hill Lane, as a resident of the center, and being on the original committee that, um, came up with these bylaws and whatnot, I would like to propose that it be 400 feet, not 300 feet, 400 feet, you know, setback.
Period.
Period, 400 feet.
And, and what would be the reason for 400 feet versus 300 feet?
I don't think 300 is enough.
Should it close all of my lot?
No, I, I don't.
I think 500 is enough.
No, he didn't coerce me. No, I just think the 300 isn't enough in the center. You want to get distances in there at some point, don't you, down the line? 300 feet isn't going to do it.
One of the issues that a lot of sites lack is parking.
Yep.
And you really do need more depth, you need a little bigger parcel, and 150 feet and 40,000 square feet to get your sidelines, your parking, uh, you know, 20, 18, 20 feet here, 18, 20 feet of parking on the side, some buffers, turn around at the middle, it's jammed. And a lot of places are underparked, and we do need more parking on those parcels that are being provided by the bylaw. I always thought the bylaw was weak as to the amount of parking required.
See, I, I guess I'm leaning towards the, the depth of an existing property.
That's wrong.
As of a certain date, the, the depth of that lot as of, you know, July 1st or something.
I think these are some things we can continue to work on, it's, the question tonight is whether we're going to eventually make a motion to bring this to town meeting floor. And then, in that interim period, as you brought up before, to try to work out some solutions to the parties that are here, and see if we can get something by the time we get to town meeting that we will offer up as a solution.
Well, couldn't we make a modification tonight, though, that would then alter what goes into the town warrant?
I would think we could.
I guess I, I would prefer not having to make a, an amendment on town meeting floor if we have a sense of what we want. I was going to suggest that we're talking about existing depth.
Are we running, are we pushing the issue then, just because we think we hear something made here at 400 feet, but we're not quite sure if some folks would agree to 400 feet, and then we can say 500 feet tonight?
But why not leave it? Why not leave it at the maximum depth? There's so few lots involved, I mean, you're spending so much time on this, and how many lots are involved?
Well, the question is how many lots are involved today versus how many lots are
involved if you start to aggregate properties.
If you do, if you say the maximum of an existing lot as of today.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
And not, you don't have to worry about it then, that people putting lots together to get, to go so far.
Well, right, that's what I was suggesting, is that we, are we saying the same thing, that we say the existing depth as of?
You're, you're saying, let's put a date on it.
Right, because we don't want people to start adding to it.
But you're going to eliminate that right there, you're going to say the existing lot as of now.
Right.
So nobody can add to it.
The depths.
Depth, depth, depth.
You can't go back for it.
As of now. So I can't go and buy, well, I can't anyway, the cemetery, but people can't buy a bunch of lots to get so deep. But where can they on this? There's not, there's not many that they can. You just go with the existing lots. And wide should be good, if you want to promote business.
Wide's better than narrow.
If you go wide, you can achieve what you're trying to achieve.
Wide is better than narrow, because now you're going to have the ability to get into there safely.
I would, I would think we discussed it. Don't you?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I don't think we're going to come up with a solution right now, and I don't feel like just going, oh, yeah, that, that makes more sense than something else.
Well, what's?
But I am willing to work with the group that's here, and say, yeah, you know, we have time, town meeting is May 9th, to try to come to.
Yeah, but we have to get it on the warrant, we'd rather have it on the warrant than what we want it.
Is the warrant closed?
The warrant will be closed, and by the way, if we amend it on the floor, we can't simply change it here, because we didn't have it advertised that way. We said delete.
Yep.
So the only way to really get this done properly is in fact to bring an amendment to it at town meeting floor, because then it's before the legislative body to vote it with the amendment.
That makes sense.
So basically, we're going, we're talking about going back to the original.
So, so the argument being made right now is that.
Whatever the, as was advertised tonight, is what should be voted on, and whether we move that to town meeting floor, if we wanted to accommodate any change, then, and that forward, uh, and see how it goes to town meeting floor.
So, let me just give you my understanding of what you just said, that we would take a vote on the amendments as drafted, as published and advertised for these public meetings, with the assumption, with the stated assumption publicly, that between the timing of this vote and town meeting, we've taken to account these comments, and develop a written proposal to bring to town meeting floor to amend it to accommodate some of these issues. Does anyone, everyone understand what, what we're talking about doing here? Um, so that, to the extent we're either saying 400 feet or the exact existing depth as of today, I think that would accommodate a lot of what we're hearing. Um, I, the, on the depth issue, on the mixed use issue, um, we'd still have to have a discussion between now and town meeting about whether we're going to delay the effective date.
Right.
Of the mixed use, um, elimination of the mixed use from the, of any further mixed use development in the district.
That could be part of your process.
Would be part of our process between now and town meeting.
Correct.
Don't forget, we still have to get back to public hearing regarding 220 Center Street, so a lot of this discussion is just going to spill over into the next public hearing, that's all there is to it. We're all around it, we're talking all around the issue, we're just not.
Well, so next Monday night, everyone will.
Put the spotlight on yours.
Monday the 27th.
Is it Monday the 27th or next week?
It's next week, the 13th. Oh, it's 13? Yeah.
So next week on March 13th, we have a public hearing on a site plan for 220 Center Street, which is one of the sites in the Center Protection District, that, um, we will be looking at a special permit having to do with, um, a mixed use, multifamily and, and business development on that site. Um, so if anybody is interested in these issues, you may also want to participate in that site plan review next week. Um, so do we have a motion with respect to the bylaw amendment with respect to the depth from the public way?
No, moved.
That's not lost.
You want to make the motion?
Let you do it.
No, so, sure, go ahead.
No, I mean, I don't know what form you want it in, I guess, I don't understand the motion. Do you want it to simply state that the motion be moved, that the, I move that the planning board approve, uh, placing the article, which would be affected everyone. I want to make sure we have it correct. Um, I move that the, the planning board approve to move to town meeting floor, revise section 310 by replacing the language, or I should say, removing the language, whichever is greater, from imperal to following ways being the addition, so that we revise section 310 by replacing it as said, and that, that the planning board move to approve that to go to town meeting floor, that article, that amendment.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any more discussion?
Well, that, how do we, will you also state that you will review, and, and we're under the assumption that we're going to propose amendments at that floor meeting?
Yes, but I don't think that would be appropriate as part of the motion, um, because this motion has to be a clean way to get it onto the warrant, and then at town meeting floor, obviously, if we don't, um, do what we said we were going to do tonight, and consider, and either explain or provide amendments at town meeting floor, then I assume some people will get up and oppose the bylaw change at town meeting. Um, but I, I don't think we would build that into the motion right now. Does everybody agree with that?
Yes.
Does the motion have a second?
Yeah, Mr. Wondell, seconded, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so it'll be on the, on the warrant, it'll be at town meeting, um.
It'll be another discussion on Monday?
There'll be another discussion next Monday, as we talk about the specific site plan in 220, but now we need another motion on the, um.
Move that the planning board approve that the amendments, proposed amendments to the town zone by, zoning by law, as advertised to be deletion of section 47D2, deletion of section 47D3, deletion of section 47D4C, uh, deletion of section 47E1, and to revise section 47E2 as advertised, and to delete section 47E3, as printed in the public hearing notice, and to move that to the town board approve, moving that onto the town meeting floor, discussion ready.
Second.
Any discussion? I would again put into the record that the assumption of this vote tonight among the planning board members is that we will be looking at this between now and town meeting to discuss whether we would, um, have an amendment ready to put before the town meeting, to address some of the concerns that have been brought up in these public hearings.
Um, I think that we also have to make a recommendation on general, in other words, we voted to put this onto the warrant, but usually there's a section left on the warrant that says planning board recommendation, recommendation. So, I would suggest in that area that we move to simply state that we approve recommendation at this time for the article.
We still need to finish that, but I think we have a session.
All right, let's, let's vote first. So we have a motion on the floor, we have a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So now, so the next point, there's a recommendation, the board want to make recommendation as to the adoption of the bylaws, for instance, um, and, uh, it's going to have to happen probably by at least next week, is what that was.
I guess my question is, could, do you, in your view, do you believe that we could say that we would recommend adoption of the bylaw, um, with any modifications that the planning board may propose on town meeting floor?
Sure.
I think we're contemplating some modifications, so I don't have any problem with that language, but that we have to also, again, there's, the board, what gets it there is the board's approval of what's being essentially submitted.
Right.
That's what makes it get to town meeting floor. If we vote not to recommend it, it dies here.
Right, right. So I, I would be comfortable voting to recommend it with that. So I, I would be comfortable voting to recommend it with that caveat.
Yeah, that's subject to appeal or amendment to town meeting floor.
Subject to such amendments as may be proposed by the plant, planning board at town meeting floor. Is that okay?
Yeah, I'm up to that effect.
Second?
Second.
So it's allowing that to be a recommendation, but we're, we're opening up the possibility, Matthew, of amendment on town meeting floor if proposed by the planning board. Means if somebody else comes up with an amendment, we may have to oppose your thing on town meeting floor. But if we make your recommendation, obviously, we would not be opposing ourselves.
What's the hurry here? It seems like you guys are just trying to push this thing right through. That's what it feels like sitting out here.
I'm sorry, but let's make this action before we take on another question.
All right, so we have a motion. Did you get that motion?
Yeah, why didn't you clarify it again?
Do you want, do you want to say what you have written?
I've got nothing, so.
Okay.
You got it on tape, right?
So we?
But we want to move that we will make a positive recommendation or determination for the article. But, or you had a language, subject to, subject to amendment.
Amendments proposed by the planning board on town meeting floor. So in, in terms of, so any discussion? And I hear that Mr. Ingram was raising the issue of whether we're pushing this through. I guess my feeling is that it has been properly noticed and it has been, you know, we have given it two nights of public hearing. We will be discussing these things again between now and town meeting, specifically next week in the context of a specific site plan, which should be somewhat removed from the bylaw because the bylaw isn't addressing that specific site. But these issues overlap with some of the site plan considerations.
The bylaw isn't addressing what particular site, I'm sorry.
220 Center Street has a site plan before the planning board.
Right.
That's one that's already been designed and through the ZBA and will be back before the planning board. So this, some of the same issues will come up in that context. It will flush out maybe some of what people are hearing and concerned about, but I don't want to mix the two because they really are two separate issues. One is a specific property owner made a specific proposal. And the other is a bylaw that has more general application. We will be taking into account the concerns expressed here tonight, but I, I don't think the planning board thinks this is something that necessarily needs another year of time to work through. I, I don't know that we're going to add a lot to that conversation.
Because it was a failed experiment? I mean, with all due respect, you put notice on this. I walked into the first meeting, you canceled it, you postponed it. After your first notice, you postponed the first hearing on this. Big paper right there on that easel. Sorry for the inconvenience, but we can't meet. Okay? So now we get in here and in two Monday nights, we, all of a sudden, you, you want to, you know, push this through on something that's been on the books since 1977? And you're, now you're calling it a failed experiment?
No, this has not been on the books since.
No, this has not been on the books since 1977.
Next year's just the depth.
The depth.
Just the depth issue has been on the books since 1977. The mixed use piece of this.
Can I move it before us for the second?
I just want to clarify for the record.
Seventy nine?
Seventy nine, yes.
Okay.
The, the mixed use has not been on as long.
About 2006, I guess, five, somewhere around there, four, five.
So it, it had to be before 2005 because that was when the Sealand site plan was done. So the, so the mixed use piece of this bylaw has not been on.
Okay, well, be that as it may, it's been around for a while and through one of the worst recessions our economy's ever experienced. And I think that the board needs to give that some very realistic consideration. That's why the commercial couldn't thrive in the downtown. I mean, people, you all have retirement funds, how'd they do in that dip? I mean, the whole economy dipped like that.
The whole Santa Plaza was built in that timeframe.
And they delivered.
The, the Santa Plaza was built in that timeframe and then, and they're fully, and they're fully full.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. But I mean, what do you, we've got 7-Eleven and who else do we have here? Cumberland Farms. Do we need a Tedeschi's?
Can we?
I, I think that we're past the time that we've allowed. So we have the vote with respect to putting this on town meeting, making recommendation to town meeting. So we hear, you must, Ingram, but I don't know that.
That's fine. I mean, you're going to do what you want to do, it's fine. I just want to say what I want to say.
Are you sure that we?
No, so we have a motion, a second. Can we vote on the recommendation as stated by Brian? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Second.
I did.
And a second. All right, so we need a motion to close both public hearings?
Yeah, I guess if they're both advertised, they're just.
So Brian, are you making a motion?
Oh, I'm, I'm closing public hearing concerning the advertised change in amendment to bylaw, zoning by law regarding depth. Close that section of the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? None?
Close the next one.
Yeah, I move to close the public hearing concerning, as advertised, deletion of mixed use within the Center Protection District.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, so we've closed those public hearings and will now move on to the rest of our business for now. We now have four may for 538 Washington Street.
What's your, is what, fill next week, seven?
Um, I'm not sure. Yeah, sorry. So it's posted on my public.
So you have an existing lot, right?
I have an existing 199 Center Street.
That's the one that's 400 feet.
Well, I don't know exactly how far it's over three. But it goes back, well.
And it always has gone back?
It always has gone back there. But it comes out, well, if I put that other piece on there, it comes out to a point on Molly Lake.
So on our plot plan back in ninety seven, it said 300 feet. But there was a line.
There's always been a 300.
Yeah.
Yeah, I always assumed it was 300.
That's what's on the, what's on the map.
Right, 300. So it's like, why?
How did this change?
Always because we.
I see this.
So we went to mixed use.
Who's idea was that? Oh, it's hard to read. It doesn't spell it very clearly. Try to explain it. Better to be right.
Right, do we have anyone here on 538 Washington Street?
Yeah, they're here.
Four may.
They're right here.
I was trying to move right along there, Brian.
Good evening. I'm Bob Bass, the applicant.
Tom Morris from Outback Engineering.
Oh, I have a plan for showers?
I've got the, also the.
Oh, do you have individual copies for us?
Uh, no, it's just, yeah, it's an A form. I've got two copies, a hard copy, I assume he's got. I think currently he owns all of, I think currently he owns all of this, is that right? Yeah, yeah. So it's lots one through three and this parcel here are all one parcel currently. And it actually, I can show you.
So what, what's going to be transferred? This parcel A or this?
Yeah, so this is how it is currently. It's one big lot.
Okay. And you're going to make three lots out of it?
Yeah. Which it actually was almost. It was three lots back in 1967. It's almost, we're making it almost the same thing. We're just cutting off the extra parcel.
Make them conforming lots, do you have any?
Yes. And then back the lot at the corners, for instance.
So it looks like this guy in any way?
Are these up ones?
Yeah, there's no up ones on the question at all.
That makes life so much easier.
Yep. It is in natural heritage and we've already filed a visa.
Right, but that'll be, theoretically, they're buildable.
Yeah.
If you get the approvals that you need from other boards.
Yeah, they've already been heard.
Right, but theoretically.
Okay, so what we see contains that lot one, two, and three be combined into one lot.
No.
No, we're separating.
I'm sorry, you're taking it out of the bigger lot and taking it into two buildable lots?
Yes.
So I have no problem with this. Does anybody have a problem?
No, I think it meets our, our requirements for a four may lot.
Right, it doesn't make anybody else non-conforming. Everybody else is fine.
And this is marked as a not a buildable lot for conveyance purposes.
Yep, that's not part of this transfer. Parcel, it's not part of this. Or it is now, but you're going to leave it.
So you could convey parcel A to one of these people or one of these people because you can't convey it as a buildable lot. So it will be a separate lot, it just.
I make a motion as well.
Oh, so you're planning to keep in these two?
Well, potentially this name would like more of a buyer or potentially whoever's in that house.
All right.
I make a motion that the town, that the board's clerk have the authority to sign these four may lots.
Won't you need to sign it?
Can we, can we sign these? Yeah, the bylaw. So I, I second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No one opposed? Unanimous?
Lady on building two?
This is. At least one of the lots in the market. We got four. Okay, I think I got four people, so. Now, should Tom also sign our two? I think one of these is going to go to the town clerk, I'm going to keep one. So I assume if I have a copy correctly, he should sign these as well. And I think that one is your copyright, that. Yep. So these two are our copies.
That is the easiest four may we've had in a long time. It's a real four may.
Well, everything can be sensitive.
We've had some bizarre four mays lately.
Oh, really?
More intensive four may.
This is the extent of I need to.
Thank you very much again.
That's what I'm told. I've never actually researched that issue.
Eventually, there'll be something, eventually, the minutes of this may will be on the web eventually and it'll state that the board voted to endorse your four may. The law is, you know, it'll be signed an hour ago.
Oh, wow, what is this?
I was thinking about that as, as we're talking about this.
Yeah.
Right, but just excluding. Right, which is the exclusion.
So you need my?
Right, I, I was actually, that's exactly what I was thinking.
Everything we did was so easy.
I don't want to be a piece of.
Yeah.
Oh, thank you.
Yep.
I know a place where we can totally. Just look at Samson Lumber and that has, goes way back.
Yeah.
And that depth is 400 feet.
Thank you.
Okay, you have a question. Thank you, have a good night.
Have a good night.
I know.
Good night.
Eyeball the five of them, say, lot, lot. So we.
So Tom, you, you signed, you signed a bylaw.
Yeah, we got.
Okay, so we got a few more.
We have a couple of routine administrative matters.
Yeah, we actually got a few interesting.
Can we, do we have everyone here that we can approve the planning board minutes of Monday, February 27, 2017? Tom, myself, Brian. No, we don't have enough. Okay.
I wasn't here.
On January 23rd, we have Andy, Paul, Tom, and Brian. You guys could do Monday, January 23rd.
All right, I make a motion that we accept the minutes of Monday, January 23rd as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I abstained because I wasn't there.
Okay, so for the minutes of the 27th, it'll save paper if you guys give that back to me. I mean, it doesn't matter, but that way we won't have to print it up again for your next package.
Oh, if we give it back to you, just give it back to you again?
Exactly. I know it sounds kind of silly, but.
Recycling.
That way, yeah.
Wait, 23rd, so February 27th is what we're giving back to?
Unless you have a great desire to.
Okay, Matthew, what else do you have for us tonight? See that there, I apologize that I did not go to the site walk on Sunday. I, it's not this weekend and in my fog, I forgot about it.
A bit of a total morning. I remember all about it.
Matthew and I were there.
I'm going to have to go by there this week and just take a look. When are they coming in? Next week, next afternoon?
Twenty seventh. I think March 27th.
Are we meeting every week this month?
Feels like it. We're busy.
I think we're not busy.
I think we're not meeting March 25th. But, yeah, I think so next week then, not the 20th and then the 27th. Okay, so for, I think I already mentioned, for the, the road acceptance public care for the selectmen, that'll be March 20th, just sort of FYI. I, I don't think any, any of us need to be there. They've already got our, our support. It's just where the selectmen go on whether to.
That's a question of the way.
Exactly, the two.
When are they doing it? March 20th?
Yeah, and I think probably Ellen Kelly's going to be there just, you know, obvious intervention. Maybe some of the residents will be there.
If somebody could be there from our board, it would probably be helpful in case they question.
Right.
And, and that we can make clear that we're moving, that it go on to the warrant because we.
I can, I mean, I can ask Sabrina if she wants me to be there. I think it's, I think it's probably not necessary. She's got, she's got the letter for me. But I can ask, I can ask Sabrina if she wants like a, me or a planning board person.
I see there's a new walk scheduled for the water, for the Water Street project in 40B for March 8th at 10:00 AM, which is Wednesday at 10:00 AM. I cannot be there.
But there's another walk.
Yeah, it's, it's this Wednesday, March 8th, I think kind of.
March 8th at 10:00 AM, there's a walk at the 40B project in Water Street, which I cannot make, I have two contracts. So if anybody can make it.
At 10:00 AM?
I think I'm going to try to go to that one, it seems like it would make sense.
Who, who's, who set it up there?
This, I guess, I think it's the, the state, I think, that has set this one up. And it's, I guess, because the first site work they did for whatever reason wasn't sort of a success or, you know, people.
Too many people got their feet wet.
Yeah, yeah, well, it got wetter, I guess, last day.
So the other thing you put in our files was 300 Center Street? Are you looking for us to take action on this tonight? On the draft, on the letter on 300 Center Street, or you're just advising us that you're going to send this in?
I think it's ready to be signed. I've prepared it. And so that's, I mean, I wrote draft of that, just a confusion, but that is my final version, subject to any, you know, changes you guys ask for. I don't know if you guys want to sign it tonight or. Uh, I don't know if you guys want to sign it tonight or spend some time looking at that. I think what that is, is exactly the same as what I've prepared, ready to be signed, except the fact that I wrote draft of all this.
The only issues we, the only conditions we had on our approval was the payment of the, of the money, which has been done.
Yeah, yeah.
The closing off of that illegal entrance on Ponder Lake Street, which has happened.
Yeah.
And we had no other outstanding conditions, so there's no reason why we shouldn't, um, sign this and certify that we've given site plan approval, right?
Yeah, I mean, that was my suggestion last week.
He fixed, he fixed the drainage.
Ready.
He fixed the drainage.
Um, that I can't really say, I mean, there's still, there's still work that he's, he wants, I mean, he wants to continue to finish up his work and Peter Palmeri's gonna go to do another section probably.
Wasn't that one of, wasn't that one of the conditions?
Yeah, it was.
And that was at the front of the place, right?
During the construction, the completion of projects, stormwater basins, the site contract, we should notify the planning board's consulting engineer. Remember, her to observe the water table at the bottom of the basin, has that been done?
As I understood it, um, James Costello told me that's been done, but I understood it. But it'll be up, it'll be up to Peter, I think.
Yeah, the problem is, is that we can, you know, they can tell us a lot of things.
Yeah.
The question is, you're gonna verify that that's been done and that it's, it complies.
Well, also in this letter, I think where it says, and it's meeting the planning board voted to grant the petition or site plan approval with conditions to be written in a later date. Should we say, um.
Or wrote the conditions.
That we wrote the conditions, so this, um, case description that's going, that's being signed should include the conditions, right? Shouldn't the conditions be here?
The condition, I mean, the conditions are on the following pages. Normally what, I mean, I originally started doing these based on. What I'd see from Wade Maryland had done, where they're, that page, which I think is the proceedings, and then what's on the following page is the decision which contains the conditions. But a lot of the stuff is what I'm trying to figure out.
So can we, so can, can you verify for us that some of these things, specifically whether Peter's done the, uh, engineering review, um, of the, of the drainage?
So our site plan approval will still have these conditions.
Yeah, and we, and we've, and we've got the ASB plan.
Yeah, we, well, it's not, the work is not finished yet, so we, what we have is still.
File our site.
The plan. We've, we've still got the drawings.
We don't usually do that.
What is the purpose of signing this off now?
The difference of this one was is that by us granting, giving the conditions, they can use the deck, correct? It relieves, it relieves them of the restriction on that deck.
So they need an ASB plan before an occupancy permit may be issued?
I think that would still.
Too late for that.
Yeah, that's for sure. Well, we got, they give it.
I don't think they have an, I think the occupancy permit they have, I believe, is only for the interior.
Correct, they don't allow them to use the, the, the construction of the deck that was done without permits.
I think that's correct, and in fact, he was telling me about how, yeah, he doesn't, he has to like, yeah, he doesn't let anything on the deck.
No, he's not allowed to.
Yeah.
Well, I, well, can't we just get, come to some sort of, uh, agreement here that we, we're not sure all of these conditions have been?
Yeah, I think they have to be.
Once, once you sign this, it's over. All right, even though he's gonna, anyone can tell you they're gonna finish whatever, but not necessarily, there's no follow up after that.
So Matthew, can you find out? And then, we have a meeting next week.
But I think he can't, he can't, he can't continue with, I don't think he can continue, I mean, maybe, I don't think he can continue with construction until we, you guys, I mean, like, I mean, normally with a site plan, at least in theory. It's submitted, the, the missions are signed.
Well, what construction is he have to do? He didn't have any construction to do.
He's still doing the fire pit, uh, and I think a little other stuff, topography, like a random.
He certainly, his plant isn't established.
Yeah, so some of the stuff would be the landscape, he's. I mean, the reason, I mean, originally, the reason he got in touch with me, and probably part of the reason why he paid the bounce, was because he wants to, to finish the construction. Uh, and he didn't wanna, I think he didn't wanna be in violation, so he didn't wanna get back to work on it until he was sure we were okay.
You said in violation or what?
Yeah, let's just find out, it seems to me that the only issue we have here is the stormwater basins. And the observation of the water table, has that been done? And we, did we have a final run through by Peter?
You're often, you have a release from conservation?
There are a few things that there will be open here.
No, yeah, that she'll comply with your conditions issued by the conservation commission, which were approved on October twenty fourth, twenty sixteen.
Well, he's just, he's just got a, you know, statement, it's everything he's been doing.
Right, we just wanna make sure that the things that we stopped him off have been addressed. Because we're signing something that he, that the, the deck was already built, the fencing was already installed, the, you know, did he?
So is he allowed to, is he allowed to continue work on this without us, without you guys?
Sure, he's a worker, but, but he.
So you guys will sign it up?
I think he wants a release to be able to use the deck.
Right.
And until, until we sign off on these ten items, he's prohibited from using it. And I think we need Peter to go up and look at it, and we need to let up the conservation saying that they're, they're happy with it.
I don't know if he's saying, I can't begin the construction without you guys signing off on the plan, which is actually, you know, put the cart before the horse, I don't know, all that. I think Tom's on to it, which my recollection was, he had to go up and complete these things, probably wasn't being able to say, okay, you can go occupy that deck now and go up and. Do whatever they were intending to do. So, um, yeah, I think that we can't really sign off on this yet, but we have, he is, he has the full authority, as long as he's pulling a builder permit, to go up and make the improvements to the deck. And upon completion of that deck, he can.
Actually, we told him to license and move to sign off.
He came to us above the shed, right?
Yeah, yeah, I already said that.
We didn't say, no, you can't do that because we haven't signed up on this, you can't begin, no. He said, fine, what's the form?
All right. What else do we have? I mean, I guess this is, this whole period of sentence means it's sort of an unusual situation because the construction began before the site.
They start it out wrong.
Exactly.
All right, and then they put it on the, on the backs of everybody else to make it right.
Um, there's, for, for fifty six Pembroke Woods Drive, the warehouse expansion that, um, you guys did site plan approval back in November. Uh, there's just a field change there, um, that Peter went out and reviewed, and it looks like from Peter's email, he said basically, this is, this is sort of an acceptable field change. I don't know if you, you folks, I know, I think in the past, sometimes you guys would vote like to accept a field change, or I'm not sure. Um, I don't know if, or just to note, anyway, I'm notifying you, I don't know if you wanna vote to say.
It should be, it should be voted on by this committee, but it's considered a minor modification on an accepted plan.
It doesn't necessitate going to the site to review again.
Correct, so all it does, if we determine this is a minor modification, all we have to do is sign off on it and say. But we have, have a.
These lines is discussed in the board, the board grants approval, not the engineer grants approval.
So we have, before us, the, the proposed modifications to the site plan at, um, fifty six Pembroke Woods Drive? We have a motion to accept the modifications as a minor modification?
What do you mean that? What is the modification?
Can someone else read it?
Is there anything in there, Major, anybody? I didn't see it in my packet, but probably have, is there any in there?
I disagree, but they want, they want to fill the bridge in catch base in six, seven, three, five, and brick, and a whole fly.
You might have Peter come in for the next meeting or when we could schedule.
Yeah, absolutely.
Why are these abandoned?
I'm not sure, so why don't we bring him in if we're not sure we can get our question.
Well, we don't want anything to affect the drainage here in an adverse way.
Especially with those box trails all out there.
So why is Peter recommending that the changes be handled as a field change and the contractor be permitted to proceed?
Oh, he has, he has, okay.
So Peter, in his email, says, we are in agreement that these proposed modifications will have no impact.
Okay.
On the proofed design in the existing drainage system. Consequently, we recommend that these changes be handled as a field change and recommend that the contractor be permitted to proceed.
Well, and will they end up on the ASB?
I can't see what he's got, what he's doing.
They reviewed the proofed site plan and the drainage calculations for the modifications.
These, these are new systems, he wants to fill in.
Yes.
Catch base in three, three, whole five, catch base in seven.
And explain this to the.
Catch base in six, and plug out the other one somewhere, because they're not getting used anymore.
And he needs to, to grade things to build that road the way he's on the plan.
I don't think, as Brian said, Peter should be able to talk.
But it looks like it's a, it's a minor modification, it's a field change.
You should discuss those.
But we have a meeting next week, right?
Yeah, we do.
Has it always stuck right now with other packages?
Uh, no, not at all, actually. And I think, I mean, I think Peter is coming in next weekend, I believe he's, when he's done the review for two twenty. And in fact, I have, uh, it's not in your packet, but if you guys want, I have Peter's comments on two twenty seven.
So Peter's coming in next week anyway?
Exactly, yeah.
So we'll put this off. So you'll put this on the agenda for next week, Matthew?
Um, yeah, sure.
Even, even if not on the agenda, it would.
I wanna know, I wanna know the proceeding with now that, you know, with the fact of it.
Should that be something that could be just under routine, routine?
And considering all this mixed uses, you know?
Okay, so I just.
Things like a bad chucking hole.
Okay, so then, um.
So what else we have?
So you know about the forty B sidewalk, um, there's also, this probably doesn't matter, there's a, just so you know, there's another solo kickoff meeting on Wednesday. Uh, this Wednesday, I think at noon, I believe it is.
Do we get money?
So we're not getting money until?
Yeah, asked a question about the money.
So not getting the money until, so my understanding is that we're not gonna get the money until they finish construction, but before they get approval to start operations?
Um, I think.
So what town council has advised?
I think the town council said after operations, like, yeah.
Whoa, 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 that is hell, bro.
When do they get the say?
It's a mystery to me, cause it's either like.
Is there a condition of approval?
No, first off, it has to be.
This is that town council's interpretation is bizarre and doesn't.
But it's a condition, it's a site.
But unfortunately, that's what the town council said.
I don't see it as a big problem.
I mean, this one, we haven't, we don't have any choice.
Whether we get the money tomorrow or we get the money when the things are running.
How you, how you gonna call them in here? The people who are giving us the money?
Well, they're gonna be operating, we can call them.
We do have an agreement.
Oh, it's a different, different group that's gonna be operating.
Well, if we wanna spend money on town council to go, so go for the money, it's what happened, but.
I mean, we do have their, it's in the conditions, you're gonna provide us twenty five thousand. Apparently, the language around that is what, prompt the town council, have to look at and say, well, it says when it's in operation. That's how we condition it, when you operate.
I don't think we conditioned it as an operation.
In my opinion, that's not how we condition it, but that's how town council's reading it.
No, we conditioned it, we conditioned it prior to the beginning.
We just put it as a site plan condition without a date.
Anyway. Anyway.
My, my, my.
Anyway. Anyway. Since.
Hold twenty five, uh, tiles.
Well, let me just ask a question, gonna ask a question. So since the, um, the superstructure's kind of been put up, right, and we can see the sidewalks. And I know we told the abutters that we wanted to see what it would look like when it went up, we wanted to see it, now's a great time to look at it because the vegetation's where, you know.
Go by it all the time, and I'm like, we need some buffer.
That's right, right, I, I do the same thing, so I looked at it, and I've heard some, well, well, but, you know, when people are talking about it.
Well, that's why you can't throw up on the design until it's up, now you look at it.
Right.
And it's like, we need buffer.
Yeah, and people are talking about it, they'd like to see a buffer, so.
Apparently on social media, somebody said that it's, that those are the foundations for a parking garage.
Yeah, for the.
The one thing, uh, we would be premature, we don't know really where the solar panels are facing. It's going to be in what, sort of, early on, and I don't know, you know, we're gonna. Yeah, don't worry about it, folks, okay? Nothing, nothing's gonna change.
This is gonna be done by then.
Yeah.
So this is, this is the cooking cut out.
We get the money in June?
I just wanna make sure, get it before the water town.
Uh, they're under condition, there's no question that they owe the money. Council is not arguing, you guys don't really have a right to get to these funds. They're not arguing that at all, it's when you get it.
Well, that's true, but we may need to stop looking at, at getting the design.
Well, that's what I'm saying, now's a good time to look at it.
Even if we had the money tomorrow, if you're doing all those things, and it's still, you know, you have, we're talking about planning, they gotta mature, it's gonna take time, years if not, it's necessary.
Listen, by the time, listen, by the time, listen, by the time they mature. That stuff's gonna be ripped out of there, it's gonna be off script. By the time this stuff gets matured.
Yeah.
But it's only a twenty five, at the max, twenty five.
Let me add another thing.
Well, okay, and if you drive by the site, you can see where the counter fence line is, you can see where, as I said in the past, the topography lends itself.
That's why it goes up.
Lends itself well to being able to shut everything, you know, you don't have to have thirty feet of things, you need about ten or fifteen. And I bet if you went across the line, you'd find that fifteen proportions have matured, you're probably gonna knock out ninety percent of those whole panels on the side.
Yeah, or at least you'll have something pretty to break up the site.
It's not a big job.
No.
Just properly putting stuff in the place. We got landscape architect, right?
So why do we have this mending wall thing in front of us?
I, uh, I'll get to that in a second.
Are we still holding money here?
Yeah, let me get to that in a second. Uh, so I put the thing in your packet about that conference on March, March eighteenth, if you're interested, um.
Is there anything there that you were hoping to go to?
Uh, I thought about it, I think I probably won't go to that one.
Okay.
But at some point in future, I should go to some of those, those training sessions or something. I think probably, uh.
I would ask, I would ask the attorney about this.
What?
About that money.
Well, I don't understand what the, I don't know what this is.
We took the property, the back taxes, we took the house out in front.
Oh, yeah, hold on, hold on a second, I'll get that, so, so for the, uh, for the marijuana probation, I guess I'd just say, we should probably, I mean, I'll know better soon, but we should probably tentatively plan on public care on April third. Uh, which I know is the first Monday of April, but keep in mind, I'll be, I'll be traveling April tenth to fourteenth.
Why don't we compel that of public care then?
I believe the planning board has to have a public care within sixty five days after.
Take that from marijuana.
Because it's a, it's a zoning bylaw amendment proposal.
Because it's a zoning bylaw change.
Oh, because it's a.
We're doing the same thing with, the chief is saying with your.
So the selectmen today voted to.
To ban everything. We don't, we don't live in a modern world.
But I didn't realize it was a, no, I didn't realize it was a zoning bylaw change.
Yeah, which is kinda strange, but.
Is it making it not an allowed use?
Right.
Yeah, but it was.
By the way, so.
And arguably, it would counter.
You would also knock up the net for that one.
It would get rid of our medical marijuana district.
As well.
Yeah.
Have to work so hard.
I have different ideas, but I'm gonna have it for tonight.
So then, so the last thing, I guess, is, um, so just keep April third, just sort of keep April third in your mind as a night we're probably gonna meet. Uh, and then, the last thing is the amendment wall thing.
So I wasn't here for this, so I have no idea what this is about.
Yeah, so it, it, it kind of became defunct many years ago, we still have like that, what is it, one thousand seven hundred dollars in the balance? If you look on the next page, you'll see why it's hard to get in contact with the state because.
Well, first off, here's my, here's my question to the town attorney, all right? We took the subdivision, the back taxes, we took the, their residence on that property, the back taxes. I don't necessarily know that this shouldn't have gone with the back taxes that weren't paid.
Well, that's what, I talked with Kathleen McCarthy, who is in charge of the treasurer basically here. Um, and she feels the same way, she says, she said, as far as she's concerned, we should just, like, just transfer the money.
That's why I think you'd be finished.
Cause it stays with the town.
Before I do any of that, I would ask the attorney, our attorney, about it, our town attorney about it, to find out what, what the, what would be the law.
Yeah. Yeah.
But I do think, is if you're willing to take someone's house, and you're gonna take their land, I would assume the money that's there for that subdivision is also part of that.
Stays with land or goes to the town, pay back taxes?
Unfortunately, I disagree.
Well, I'm just...
What do you think it should go in?
I think you should cut a check for seventeen hundred and seven bucks and go find them and give it to them.
Yeah, but who you gonna get, who you gonna, who you gonna give it to?
Whoever the estate of the attorney is talking about, it's chump change.
Who's, who's money is that?
With that's a thousand dollars, you have an opinion about how to get rid of seventeen hundred?
That's right.
Bring it up to the break.
Okay?
Yeah.
It doesn't make sense.
I don't understand, we give a back to...
Yeah, that's part of the challenge, is it seems like nobody, from what Marilyn told me, I mean, I tried to call the number.
You have to draw money, Bill.
I mean, this guy, the developer, basically, got, got disbarred, as you can, if you read that thing, he got disbarred for various activities. And so from what Marilyn told me, uh, even like his relatives aren't toucher, kind of can touch with him apparently.
Well, who's in charge of the charity?
Of course, we can, we can...
Who's seeking the funds? I haven't read this one.
Well, no, no one's asking for it, so if I were, they can get rid of the money.
Well, no one's asking for it.
If nobody's asking for it, then they can...
Yeah, I guess we can just...
You don't have a request for the funds?
No, not at all, I was just...
How does this come to your attention?
I was just looking at the record, thinking, you know, I've been here for seven years.
I would just leave it.
Make a motion.
No, wait, wait, no, no, don't make a motion yet, one more, one more question for the board. Just, there, there's been talk of a moratorium, a multi-unit housing. There's been a motion, uh, by the, uh, board of selectmen to put a moratorium on multi-unit housing in Pembroke.
Period.
Period. Haven't seen anything on the amount of time that they want that moratorium to be.
Again, that would have to be a zoning change, in which case that we'd need us to go before the town meeting.
So, so it would be helpful if maybe we drafted a letter to the board of selectmen, telling them if they would like to do such a thing, that they come talk to us about it, or have us come talk to them.
And perhaps quickly, because it would have to get noticed, it would have to have a public hearing before the town meeting.
They, they, there was a vote taken at the, uh, after the public hearing for the forty B that happened about a month ago, and then I believe there was another vote taken at the subsequent board of selectmen meeting on the same thing, and I don't think it holds any word, because it didn't come from us. But I think people ought to know that, and, and the local press, they're talking about a moratorium on multi-family, multi-unit housing in Pembroke, and nothing's been before the planning board on that issue.
What's the state saying?
Too late, anyway, they couldn't...
Doesn't matter what the state says, because they can't do it.
If you bring it up in the, in the fall, you, even in very good...
But it, it may be helpful if we had some communication to the fact that...
If it's a response to forty B, it's no response, it's no defense. Because if it's in the zoning bylaws, and forty B exclusively renders you effectively, you know...
Helpless.
Yeah, then you, then a what you put in there for a zoning bylaw, you can get around it using a forty B, that's what it does.
No, but I think the other concern was that on Route fifty-three, there's sort of a constellation of multifamily housing.
That's ZBA.
And the concern is that it's...
Well, but, well, but he...
What, take that a hand?
Well, but let's, let's...
You've been that way for fifteen years now, I'm glad you're coming.
Right, but let's also be, let's also be, you know, direct about it, uh, the ZBA is an appointed board of the selectmen. So if they're unhappy with the decisions the ZBA is making, maybe they should be talking about the appointments they've been making to the ZBA, um, and maybe if they want some sort of zoning bylaw changes that would address multi-unit housing in Pembroke, they should talk to the planning board.
All you're gonna do is eliminate them, that's what we do.
Well, I guess part of it is that sometimes the way that larger, um, multifamily developments are getting in is because they are getting variances.
Correct.
And so the question is, whether or not...
Case in hand, two twenty Center Street.
So the question is whether or not the ZBA understands the guidance of the govern, of the, of their appointing board...
Correct.
In terms of multi-units. And, and, and I think that brings me to, we had talked about having a meeting between the planning board and the ZBA with town council to talk about variances and special permits, where do we stand on that? Is, what do we need to do to bring that forward?
I thought Dan was, I thought Dan was pursuing that.
It really, it should be him pursuing that, chair should pursue that.
With, with the ZBA?
With the ZBA, yeah.
And find a date?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, it adds number one, because you have to pay for the lawyer to come in.
I think we've already gotten them to say that was a good idea.
Right, but they have, they have to put one in.
Yeah, I mean, Joel Bar, I mean, it was a few months ago, but Joel Bar did, did suggest it, actually, himself, he said, you know, "It might be a good idea for me to come in and, and talk to the, the ZBA," just to give them a better sense.
But it would be important, I think, as part of that, to have a member of the board of selectmen maybe sit in on that, since they are the appointing authority for the ZBA, and since they have been, they've just passed a non-binding, obviously, moratorium on multi-unit housing.
Actually, can't the, can't the selectmen intervene in a decision?
I'm not sure they can, because the ZBA has the authority to grant or deny. The, the board of selectmen can, um, appoint a different ZBA member, um, but I don't think they can overrule the ZBA, can they?
No, I don't think so.
Skip laws, pretty clear.
Actually, can you appeal a ZBA decision to the board of selectmen?
No. They have no appeal authority over the ZBA.
So... So, so we need to work on, I think the, the answer to that too, maybe, that could be discussed in the context of that meeting, if we can get that to happen soon.
But I think it needs to be addressed, because publicly, this has happened twice publicly. So I think it needs to be addressed.
With the board of selectmen, so would you like to see, are we asking that Matt send a letter to the board of selectmen from the...
Yeah. There's a thing called, no.
Indicating that the planning board would like to discuss the proposals we're hearing
Just say no.
with regard to a moratorium on multi-unit, um, developments in town,